... order. This is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education and will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Hogue.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation for God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Might be the best I've ever heard.
Yeah. Just a second, let me pull mine back up so you could hear me.
All right, that brings us down to our special recognitions and presentations. We have three this evening, and first up is the West Virginia School Personnel, School Service Personnel Day proclamation. And we have a proclamation from the board if you want to go down with.
Sure.
Do you want to read it to Sherry? And here's the statement.
Where's Sherry talking to you?
Right there.
Oh, there he is. We have our members of the state, state president, and the local president, the chief of staff, the vice president of the West Virginia School Service Personnel Association. So we're glad to be here. This is a proclamation we have actually wanted with the governor. And then he says, I want to read the proclamation for West Virginia School Service Personnel. Whereas school service personnel are involved in nearly every aspect of education by maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, and assisting in the classroom, as well as providing administrative support, functions, safe transportation, and many other specialized services. And whereas school service personnel are instrumental in West Virginia's responsibility to educate all students, and whereas these dedicated individuals serve the children of West Virginia in our public education system and have an important role of non-instructional service to the education system, and whereas it is fitting we recognize the outstanding work these individuals do for this state, their communities, and the students enrolled in West Virginia schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Harrison County Board of Education does hereby proclaim September 23rd, 2022 as West Virginia School Service Personnel Day. Passed by the Harrison County Board of Education, Clarksville, West Virginia, this 20th day of September 2022. Signed by Gary Hamlet, President, Frank Givano, Junior Vice President, Doug Hoag, Member, Mary Frances Smith, Member, William T. Tucker, Member, and my signature as the Superintendent. So just wanted to recognize our school service personnel and congratulations. And I will just say, I gotta say. I've got to listen to Sherry a long time. She worked in a building with me, and I can't really say enough about our service personnel. I mean, they're the backbone of what keeps our buildings running and the wheels on the bus going, as Jimmy would say. So we can't tell you how much we appreciate all that you do. We're very with the kids and everything. So is there any other service personnel here?
Angela.
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 Is there anything you'd like to say?
You usually have something to say. Appreciate the acknowledgement of School Service Personnel Day on the 23rd. And like you said, we are the backbone. Kids don't get fed without our cooks. Buses, our kids don't get to school without our buses.
Schools don't get cleaned?
Yes, and so we are the backbone. And without us, I don't think schools could run.
Right. Thanks, everybody.
It takes everybody, the teachers teaching, and us, you know, getting them fed, getting them to school, keeping the buildings clean, helping the teachers in the classrooms.
Well, this is also signed by Jim Justin as well, our guy. Is there anybody else who would like to say? Well, we definitely appreciate everything that you do, and thank you for coming in. All right.
Angela, get down.
Angela, you come down.
Yes, yes, come on. There is no such word as no. That's what we tell the kids. So come on.
Say yes when you can, or no when you have to.
Listen, these guys, you guys, that's one of my greatest projects.
Mr. Locan actually is assistant superintendent. He oversees service personnel in the county.
You guys aren't coming down?
No, 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 this is good.
All right.
This is good.
If they recognize your secretaries.
That's right.
What names remain?
She keeps close to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Our next item on the agenda is Senator Romano with us today to do the West Virginia, or the resolution from the Senate on the Knights of the Golden Horseshoe. And I've turned it over to him. I think he could probably talk on his.
I've been told I don't have any problem talking, so my wife, for my wife, mostly. You know, this is a big honor for me to stand up here and do this because I'm here on behalf of the West Virginia Senate to honor some of our students that won the Golden Horseshoe. And you know, first of all, thanks goes to the Board of Education, and all the boards that came before you all, and I know it changes often, our superintendent, and all the public educators. And I just want to tell you very quickly, I'm very proud. My daughter, who went to public school her whole life, was named the academic freshman year at University of Arizona. And that's because of our public schools. And I hope everybody here realizes that public schools are under terrible attack in West Virginia. I mean, we stand to lose upwards of 30, perhaps as much as 40% of our budget over the next few years, talking about service personnel, talking about superintendent, all the teachers, because we don't have enough respect for public education. And it's the backbone of the American dream. And the students that I'm going to honor here tonight, they deserve this honor because they are making the most out of their public education. If you've ever heard me on the Senate floor, I stand up, and I love to use an old cliche, those who fail to know history are doomed to repeat. And there's nothing more true. I mean, if you're down there, if you would come down with me in the legislature, the things they try to do that have already been tried and failed, or tried and were a disaster for our state, we're doing them again because they don't know history. But these students do. The Golden Horseshoe was started in 1929, and it's the longest-running award of its kind in the country. In the entire country, West Virginia students are honored because they know West Virginia history. And these students that the Senate has honored, and I'm honored to be able to present these certificates, they learned that you have to know your governance in order for it to survive. You have to know how it's formed and how it functions in order for it to survive. You have to know how it works and what keeps it working for it to survive. And you've got to remember, and these students know it, that we live in the greatest country in the world. No matter how bad you think it is, no matter how much greater you think it could be, we live in the greatest country in the world. Everybody eats, everybody has a roof over their head, some more than others, but everybody's taken care of in our country. If you work hard, you can make some amazing things out of yourself. So I don't know what students are here, but I want to just read that these are in recognition of each student, and it honors them for achieving the Golden Horseshoe. And I got to tell you one other thing, I happen to be on the website today, no Romano has ever won the Golden Horseshoe. And I remember trying, and I missed it by a little bit, but I was really surprised that out of all my family, there's never been a Golden Horseshoe winner that was a Romano. I'm really disappointed. I'm going to get on my son. He's our last chance. James Fazelares, James here today? Come on up, James. Addison Vigil, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Addison, did I pronounce that? Charles Lane, that was an easy one. Charles. Brandon Hendricks. Brandon, what the hold is for him? Three out of three here, guys. Abigail Rock. We have Abigail. Final one, I hope she's here. Cheyenne Rathman. No Cheyenne either. Three out of three starting out, and we didn't get the last few. Did I miss anybody? I think that's all we had. So we had six Golden Horseshoe winners out of Harrison County. And Harrison County's got a tremendous school system. We really do. We score well, all of our schools do well, and we want to help lift all kids up, to give them a chance to not only get a good education, but to be productive, to do well for their families. Because all the parents in the audience knows that our sole goal is to make sure that our kids have it better than we do. And this is really part of it. So congratulations. Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. Nice hand for these young.
All right, now our next item brings us up to an update from the Director of the United Technical Center, Matt Call. First, Mr. Hoag, who is a member of that board, wanted to give a few comments.
I'm on the board down at the Career Center along with Superintendent Studdler, and also Taylor County and Dodridge County. Those kids come a long way to the Career Center, but the opportunities that they get down there are fantastic. And I've been on the board for over four years now. And each year that I've been in there, it continues to change, like our own school system, changes from year to year. Things are added, things are taken away. But, you know, they've been very, you know, consistent under Mr. Call and his assistant. And these kids get it great. Anyway, they get a great opportunity. It's hands-on. And we also realize that not all kids are, in this day and time, are going to go on to college to get a four-year degree, you know, in one field or another. So this is an opportunity for them to get hands-on experience and learn a trade, and learn that they can go out in this world and make an awful good living for themselves and for their family. So, you know, everybody asked about down at the Career Center, and I just said, you know, it's going to be better off if we bring Mr. Call up here. People have questions or whatever, things and opportunities, you know, I think that, you know, he'll gladly answer them for you when he gets done giving his little spiel. Mr. Call.
Thank you, Mr. Hoag. I don't know where to stand and talk. I hate to stand with my back to people. I can... Are you guys all right with this? Oh, I don't need sodium. It's, this is fine. Mr. Hoag, all I have to say is I'm glad to see you're an equal opportunity board member, and that your cell phone goes off here the same way it does in our office.
Really technologically advanced. I miss that part. And sometimes I forget to turn this thing off. Because after I turn it off, I forget.
By sometimes. By sometimes, it means everything.
First of all, thank you all for having me tonight. When Mr. Hoag asked me to come speak, I said, what do you want me to talk about? And he said, I don't know, I just want you to talk about Tech Center stuff. And I said, okay, I can do that. So to talk a little bit more about the United Technical Center, we are one of seven multi-county technical centers in the state. We're currently the second biggest. We serve Dodridge, Harrison, and Taylor Counties, as well as adults from all over north central West Virginia. Currently, our enrollment is at 481 students. We have 40 full-time adults in ACE programs, which means they're just four adults. We have 73 adults enrolled in secondary programs, and the balance of those students, or the balance of that enrollment is high school kids. I can tell you, in terms of keeping track of students this year, with Weavis 2.0 has been challenging. I wish I had more specific numbers for you, but I can tell you, our head count right now is 481 students, broke down by full-time adults, secondary adults, and then the balance of those are, like I said, high school students. We currently have 18 career technical training programs. Two of them that are just for adults are practical nursing and cosmetology. And then we have 16 secondary programs. I'm just going to start in one end of the building. We have collision repair, carpentry, automotive technology, electrical, power equipment, machine tool, industrial robotics, welding, allied health, therapeutic services, pre-cosmetology, drafting, drone robotics, computer systems, masonry, and law and public safety. Did I get them all? I think I got them all. The students are telling me I did. So with those, most of them have some type of state or national credential that goes along with them. Three of our programs, welding is accredited by the American Welding Society. Machine tool is accredited by the National Institute for Metalworking Skills. And automotive technology is accredited by Subaru University. And what that means is those students in our auto tech training are getting the same credentialing training as the Subaru technicians do at Jenkins Ford. And we're the only school, the only public school currently in the state that offers those credentials to students. That's a really big deal. We've gone through rigorous, for lack of a better term, accreditation standards to be able to offer those credentials. And there's a host of, I mean, I can talk as much about credentialing as you want me to. I don't want to bore you to death with that. All of our students are involved in a student leadership organization called Skills USA. And what Skills USA is, is a network of students, teachers, administrators, and industry professionals that want to train students to go into the skilled workforce or go on to some type of higher education. And I've got two students with me tonight. I'm going to let them talk to you a little bit about their experiences at the Technical Center, and their experiences in Skills USA, and some of the things we do there. Do you all have any questions for me? Because I can go on. I don't want to bore you to death.
What was the enrollment last year as compared to this year?
The enrollment last year, we were coming off of COVID, and COVID impacted our enrollment pretty hard. We ended up the year with about 330 high school students and about 60 full-time adults. So our enrollment is definitely up this year. Our evening offerings, pre-COVID, we were serving about 600 adult learners a year in our evening programs. And last year, we were at about 300. So I'm hoping that continues to grow as we come off of this COVID craziness that we have lived with for the past couple of years.
What's the number one? You said your number two. What's the largest?
James Rumsey in Martinsburg is the biggest.
How many sophomores do you have?
Sophomores, typically, last year, I can't give you that number this year because Weavis is not cooperating. You guys, Julie's laughing back there. She understands. Typically, we serve anywhere from 40 to 60 sophomores a year. The bulk of our students are juniors and seniors.
Why is that number low?
Because we look at student entrance numbers, juniors can complete a two-year program. So juniors get preference coming into two-year programs over everybody else. And then when we look at one-year programs, we look at seniors, juniors, and then sophomores, if that makes sense.
Just think if you had the freshmen there, they could complete two programs.
I don't know. I would say that depends on what the graduation requirements are at their home high school. We have probably, I would say, less than a dozen students a year complete two programs, just because of time.
And they have the fifth year, though, right? They have a year after their senior year.
We have a lot of students come back for, we call it a 13th year. So we give them that opportunity. Yes, that's where a lot of our adult students come from to start with.
Is that 13th year free of charge?
Yes. Yes, actually, we don't charge students tuition at all now. To make a long story short, do you all remember the state created Senate Bill One a couple of years ago? Senate Bill One made community colleges free for students, but they left us out. I'm not beating on you, Mr. Van Loon, at all. Please do not think that, because you have been a great supporter of us, and I really appreciate that. But we were left out of Senate Bill One, and now we have a state grant. It's called ACE Advantage. And ACE is an acronym for Advanced Career Education. And we actually pay students tuition now out of that state grant. So if a student wants to come into our practical nursing or cosmetology programs, where prior to, cosmetology was right at $9,900, and practical nursing was about $6,800, we pay all their tuition, and they can finish those programs now for about $2,500. So, and then there's no tuition cost at all for adults in our secondary programs.
What's an average salary range from all the trades that you have, that you could say that a student graduates?
It's all over the place. Our practical nurses start anywhere from, depending on where they're going, anywhere from $30 to $40 an hour. I know our machinists, after a three- to six-month trial period, they go from $18, $19 an hour to $28 to $30 an hour. It's really industry-specific. We have a lot of internship opportunities right now. I know the auto dealers in our area have been really good about hiring students to work in, kind of like their second year of their auto program. We allow them release time, and they're actually getting paid internships as technicians at several of the auto dealerships in the county. Right now, it seems like with all the job opportunities available, we have more internship opportunities available for students right now than we've ever had. We actually have more phone calls for positions than we have students to fill those positions.
Your Power Sport.
Yes, sir.
You're still doing the Power Sport?
Yes.
That's still one of the most popular.
We, yeah, that one's been pretty popular. We can handle about 32 students a year in that program, and it's been pretty consistently full, yes.
Placement's pretty high.
Placement's very high. We've got, there's, with that program, students are trained to work on any kind of recreational vehicle, four-wheelers, side-by-sides, motorcycles, inboard and outboard boat engines, snowmobiles. There's also a generator component, and there's also a small engine component. Actually, one of the big employers lately have been the ACE Hardware. If you've been in ACE Hardware, you've probably noticed a lot of them have a steel dealership component to it, and these students are actually becoming steel, steel engine technicians. So there's all kinds of opportunities available for kids right now.
And I'll say one thing, my oldest grandson, who is now a sophomore at Fairmont State, went through their nursing program down there, and he came out and was able to test right out of it and right into the nursing programs at Fairmont State. And he did really, really well. And he said that if he had have gone down there and got that experience, then he would have probably had to go to a school a year longer than what he's planning to go. So I'm really pleased with what he got with the Career Center.
Do you guys have any other questions for me? Okay. First, I want to turn it over to Nathan Perry. I want to introduce these guys. Nathan, come on. No, wait a minute. Let's do ladies before men. Sierra, come up here. Sierra Hott is a law and public safety student from South Harrison High School, and I want you to know that she placed second in the state Skills USA Crime Scene Investigation Competition last year. We're hoping we can talk her into it again, so we can send her to nationals this year. Sierra, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Call. One thing that I wanted to talk about, about the United Technical Center is kids' point of views. One thing that I really get from a lot of kids is, oh, you're not going to college. Like, this is not a good thing to do. You have to go to college, get a good career. And that is not necessarily true. From my program, which is law and public safety, you could become a police officer right out of high school. When you're 18 years old, you can be making $60,000 with overtime and no student debt. That's one thing that is really awesome, is no student debt, because that is a lot. But for me personally, I am going to college, just because I wanted to extend my career in going to the FBI. That's what I want to do. But with many other people, they just might not want to go to college, and that's a really good thing for them to do. Now, I'm not sure about any other programs. I don't really, I mean, I can't really go in there and see what they do. But for my program, it's, I've been here two years now, and the reason I came back is because it's like a family to me. And like, it's just crazy how we bond together in my class, because we work out together. And we work out, we run, we go over laws, codes, we do hands-on, we handcuff, we do crime scene investigation, we do all of that. And it's just a blast getting to become a family and knowing one another. And it's just really sentimental to me. That's why I came back. And another reason is because of the opportunities that I can get. So Mr. Darty, my teacher, said that I could possibly go to the court and see their hearings, and then I could go to the 911 call center. Just things that second year people can do, but first years can't. So that's many opportunities that I do not want to miss out on. Do you guys have any questions for me? Do you guys have any questions for me?
What year are you in?
I'm in my second year.
I know, but in high school.
Oh, junior year.
Good.
Yes. Now, last but not least, I'd like to ask Nathan Perry to come up. He's in our Collision Repair Program, and he is a student at Bridgeport High School. He also represented us in the Collision Repair Skills USA competition this year.
Hi, Mr. Call. Hi, I'm Nathan Perry. I'm Mr. Portstotler.
You've grown a little bit.
Yeah, a little bit. I never know it, so. Yeah, he asked me to come here. He's just like, hey, Nathan, I'm having a meeting at the, you know, can you come and talk on behalf of the school? And I'm like, sure. I'm in auto body, which is collision repair, but everybody nicknamed it auto body. So, because, and luckily, they like to call it that more, but it's more of one of those grittier classes. We don't really do a lot of paperwork. At the start, we did a lot of safety paperwork. That's what we base our whole paperwork around. Like, I got my OSHA card. I got it at the start of my class, and it was, I get out of there for the rest of my life, and any type of on-field work, and that's right out the gate, I got that. And that's after we did all of our safety paperwork and whatnot. We got into the class, and the safety was our number one. They always pushed that, safety, the safety that. He was coming to check on, did we put our safety glasses on? And it was just really fun, because if we didn't, always got nagged that, because safety glasses is just everything. That was number-one priority at everything there. But yeah, I also did skills for my class. I had no, I did not even plan on doing that. When I went to the tech center, it was to get my math credit. That was, nope, that was it. Because it hasn't embedded math for it. But when I was doing more of it, I kind of fell in love with doing auto body, and then I ended up doing the Skills USA, which kind of brought me into more, and I was like, there's a lot here, and just opened up so many more gates for me to go, just walk through, because it was just something that kind of helped right through. And I, now that I have another year free, I'm going to go from auto body into the mechanics class, because just to pick up more for me to do. And after that, I'm going to go out and work in a mechanic shop. And I went for my math credit. Like, didn't really think that I was going to do all that. It was just, it's really cool how much I really just fall in love with working on cars now more, and all but for math credit, so. Yeah. Any questions for me?
So things are adding up for you?
Yeah, a lot. Like, so many certifications too. There's more certifications on everything, and this is crazy how much I'm picking up and just got to walk out of high school and get a job. I already have insurance companies contacting me just to work for them, but they wanted me to know how to, there was a, well, I forget what it's called, but I needed to be able to, when a car crashed, I need to be able to tell how much it was going to cost to fix it. Estimator. They just installed a new estimating computer for us just because they heard about that, but we didn't have that. So we got a whole new computer to estimate damages on cars. And since we didn't have it last year, I picked that up this year. I learned how to estimate. I'm going to graduate that too, and my inspector's license too, just more things to pick up and get out of high school with. It's kind of, it's really nice, so. It's going to be loaded coming out of high school, and I already have job offers and all of our math credit, so. Yeah. Yeah. Any questions for me?
If you were to intern somewhere, which body shop would you intern for?
I don't really know. My cousins are the Rokiskis, they're in downtown Clarksville. I really didn't think about any really body shops. I thought about them just because they're family. And I thought, I'm really in love with mechanics more, but this cuts out a little, I think I'd intern mechanics more just to work on the engine, but that's what I'm more interested in. So I haven't really looked at a bunch of body shops in total.
I'm only asking because recently I wrecked my vehicle, and I'm looking for a body shop. I thought I'd ask you for a recommendation.
I wish, I wish I would have known. I'm sorry.
He could give you an estimate.
There you go.
I could.
There's a computer in there.
Nathan, you've come a long way. Probably.
Thanks for having me. And Mr. Call, so.
Thanks, Nathan. I'm going to end this by asking you, we can come talk and tell you about what we do. Come see what we do. Come interact with the kids. There's 400 kids just like these two in our building. They're our family there. We care about these kids. We have kids come from all over the place, different schools, different walks of life, different backgrounds, different cultures, and we're one big United Technical Center family. I can't tell you how much good we're doing for students there and what kind of incredible opportunities our students have. Come see us. Come spend some time with these kids, and we'll go from there. Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will, if there's no, if there's no objection, we will move around the agenda because we have a couple of things we need to get to first. We'll move delegation, we'll move superintendents updates, if there's no objection to later. We have one delegation, Michael J. Romano, Bridgeport. You have five minutes.
Five minutes.
You'll never make it.
Hard for me to say hello. Thank you. Since I was here, I thought I would take the opportunity to talk very quickly about Amendment Two. And you know, Mr. Call, did you get out of here already? Mr. Call was indispensable to me when I was down in the Senate, when they were trying to break up the technical schools. And it's been seven years of attacking public education, and I don't think it's because those in charge don't like public education, they don't like the amount of money we spend on it. And for those who don't know, we now have four separate forms of education in this state. We have public schools, we have charter schools, we have the voucher program, which I said was unconstitutional several times, they didn't believe me. Two courts have agreed with me. We'll see if the third one does. And we have microschools. How many in here know what a microschool is? Nobody. We have microschools in West Virginia. Well, thank you, Angela. Microschool is a one-page bill that says a microschool is any school that identifies itself as a microschool. And I asked them, how do you define something by its own name? A microschool has no regulation, has no building codes, no fire safety codes, no liability insurance, it has no, teachers don't even have to have a GED, it has no compulsory attendance, has no grades, and they're going to take $4,500 per student for every one they get in there. And they're unlimited in number, and it comes out of your budget. Now, Amendment Two, for those who don't know, is, has a good, has a good goal. I would like to see us get rid of property taxes too, personal property taxes for both businesses and individuals. But the problem is, there's no replacement for it. And it's 20% of this school, this county school's budget. It's 20% of the county budget. It provides police and fire and emergency services to everybody, senior citizen services. Statewide, it's $500 million in taxes that are going to be taken out overnight if this bill passes, because they're going to get rid of the taxes they want. They still have to pass the bill. What they were afraid to do was tell us how they were going to replace it, and they have no plan to replace it. They promised, they came down and they had a meeting with me and said, we're going to give $600 million a year to the counties to replace that tax out of the state budget. Well, that's great as long as you got money. But I asked them, I said, what happens when there's a downturn and we're in a budget deficit? They said, we're never going to have another budget deficit. And that was really their answer, that we're never going to have another downturn in this country, or in the state of West Virginia, and we can always count on them to give us that money. That's crazy. Just think of the personnel you'll have to get rid of if you lose 20% of your budget. Most importantly, for those that are listening, if the state legislature takes over a fifth of the budget of the counties, they are going to control the counties, they are going to control the boards of education, you will lose all local control of your board of education and your county government, because it'll now be controlled by the state legislature. And having spent eight years in the state legislature, I can assure you, you do not want them to have control, because it will not go well. You don't know who's going to be in charge of the state legislature from election to election, and it changes. It inevitably changes. And even within one party, it changes. There's a struggle going on right now in the majority about who's going to control the majority. So Amendment Two is an amendment that we have to speak out against, and believe it or not, Governor Justice has now gotten on my team, and I'm so proud to have him back on my team because he has, I like Governor Justice, I really do. He's, tries to do a lot of good things. But he agrees that Amendment Two is a bad amendment. We need to spread the word. The big manufacturers are going to save $500 million a year, they're going to spend $1 million a year, they're going to dangle your motor vehicle taxes in front of you. But when these counties lose the 20% of their budgets, you know what's going to go up? Your real estate taxes, and they're going to go to the roof. There's already been talk about moving the 40% discount on your fair market value. That means you're going to be assessed at 100%. If you're a senior citizen and you want to try to make, pay more than 40 more percent in your real estate property taxes, you're not going to make it. Very quickly, how much do I have left on my five minutes, Mr.?
Thirty-three seconds.
Thirty-three seconds. Amendment Four, the legislature's tried to take over the public school system now for seven years. I just didn't have the ability to fight them off this year. There's an amendment on there that allows the legislature to control the board of education, curriculum, and all public education policies. That's a bad amendment. I would urge everybody to vote against it. If you want to keep public education strong in West Virginia, if you want to have kids that have a chance to see the American dream, we have to vote both those amendments down. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am superintendent. Thank you, board. Thank you for the time.
All right, that brings us down to, well, next thing, but if there's no objection, we need to move to Item 11, Legal and Disciplinary Matters, Financial Audit Update, and the reason being that we have Mr. Dewise here from Settle and Stonaker, and he's on the clock. So I don't want to pay him any more than we have to. So if there's no objection, we'll move, we need to move Item 11 to now. No objection. So that brings us down to Item 11, which is Financial Audit Update, and we have heard some motion.
I'll move pursuant to Article 6-9A-412 of the West Virginia Code that the board go into executive session to discuss any legal matter which by express provision of federal law or state statute or rule of court is rendered confidential or which is not considered a public record within the meaning of the Freedom of Information Act as set forth in Article 129B, Chapter 29B of this code.
Is there a second? Second. The move to second it in the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will be in executive session.[1367.62]
I have a few things. A follow-up to what Senator Romano was saying. They've called us in Friday, and the Senate leadership will be meeting with all the superintendents on Friday morning to give us an update on how they're going to backfill the revenue sources for our county. So we'll see. I just got that right before this meeting, so this update's in there. We really, I don't want to go into curriculum since we just had a previous meeting for that. And I asked Mr. Lopez earlier today, I don't think we have anything really pressing for facilities right now.
Not really new news or anything significant at this point.
Just dealing with the day-to-day.
Question.
For personnel, the only update I have is we're right in the heat of finishing the certified list. What is the deadline on that, October 7th?
8.
Yeah, that's verifying every employee that works in the county and what they do and degree levels and everything. So we're right now working on that. So appreciate Ms. Leesburg for taking the time. She's one down in her department, right?
Yes.
So she's kind of doing that herself. Appreciate that. And then I should let you know too that Mr. Snyder, he's not here this evening, but he's been doing visits to the schools for safety inspections and doing perimeter checks. So he's letting me know and sending emails to any administrator or anybody in that building to let them know if there's a breach of the perimeter. We're really paying attention to that and making them aware that they need to keep their buildings locked and secured. And so he's keeping a record of that. If there's an issue, they're correcting it. And so I just appreciate that he's doing that regularly and letting me know and keeping that in an email. I think he also lets Mr. Lopez know.
How's our traffic flow in Nutterford? Better?
Well, I think it's a little better, but I still think that they're coming out the back, still trying to go in, let the kid out, back up, and then try to come out. But he's...
He's working with Nutterford Police.
Yeah, because they're going to come over onto the property now.
Yeah, they're trying to set up a way to, I think we may have to do a small contract with them, which I'm okay with if it'll correct them.
But I know it is a little better, a little better.
And how with our weapons technology?
They're still, they're taking those, they've been to several schools, and they're still making adjustments on them. So I think, I mean, they're working.
They've been pretty well used to two schools exclusively that I'm aware of and really no issues. Obviously, there's an adjustment. This is a 50 empty worked on and adjusted.
It's different in each building.
And I guess the only thing I...
The only statement I'll make is I know there's been some grumblings from some principals, maybe they don't want to use them or whatever, but I think that if there's any administrator out there that has an issue with this, they need to come and tell us as a board, because I don't think anyone on this board is going to sacrifice safety because it's inconvenient for an administrator. We'll do whatever we have to do to make it more convenient. Safety is number one over inconvenience. That's all. So they can come and speak to us if it's that bad. That's my take, but I don't think anyone on this board would want to lack safety measures.
He's...
Shame on us if we do something that happens.
Oh, yeah. He's also holding monthly safety meetings, which we had prior to. Mr. Lopez is on that, on those meetings too, and he's meeting regularly with the pro officers. And we're just really, he's got safety at the forefront. And I appreciate it, and he gives me regular updates on what's going on.
I think the pro officers really like working with these.
And I have some good news. We just got an invite to, have you been seeing on the news, the Communities and Schools programs with the governor's wife, Kathy Justice? And it's really geared around mental health and support for kids. It's a whole program. I don't know a lot about it yet, but we just were invited, Harrison County was invited to join that, Communities and Schools. So I have an invitation to go down October the 4th as a county to represent our county, and they'll give me information and bring us kind of into that fold. So we see that working in conjunction with Game Changers, and we have Project Aware in some buildings. So I just think the more opportunity that we can offer kids, the better we'll be. So I gladly accepted that opportunity, and I'll bring you more information as I know. That's all I have for superintendent update. Thank you.
Okay. That moves us down to approval. Consent items?
Make a motion to approve consent items as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I kind of like tried to go through this, and I understand that when it has a description, it not, it really just doesn't, it's not real explicit as to what it is. So I was just wondering why we're paying Upstate County Schools, I know you said this to me, or explained it to me, but like why we're paying Upstate County Schools and why we're paying Mon County Schools and Randolph County Schools. I don't...
And I explained, I hope I was right, that those are the duties that Risa used to handle, that we all took a big, a different piece, and they're paying us for some things, we're paying them for some things. So I was right.
Shared services.
Okay.
The Upstate County one...
It's shared services that Risa used to...
We took, we took a piece, everyone took a piece.
Payroll.
So like, yeah, we made pay another county for going into billing for Medicaid waiver.
We did project eyes.
They do ours, they do them for all, but they should have just left Risa together, and it wouldn't have been an issue. But when they exploded it, those things had to be done, and there's no reason for every county to do them. So, you know, the larger counties, we took more of it, smaller counties took what they could, but then they pay us for things.
Right.
We're probably getting more in from other counties than we're paying out, certainly, because we're going most of the work.
And then I was just, what's Zones LLC? It says installation, but I wasn't real sure. Installation of what?
Do you know what Zones LLC is?
I don't know that Jimmy works with them.
That doesn't just...
Oh, is that Zonar?
Huh?
Oh, it could be Zonar, which is our GPS system on our school buses.
Yep, it is.
It's an annual fee for licensers, so each, we're able to monitor exactly in real time where our school bus is.
Okay, but it says installation. That's what I was, that wouldn't be installation.
Wouldn't have a brand-new school bus that we are just purchasing. And I'm not looking at it, so I'm not sure. But each, all those have to be installed. I'm not looking at it.
And so I just appreciate that he's doing that regularly and letting me know and keeping that in an email. I think he also lets Mr. Lopez know.
How's our traffic flow in Nutterford? Better?
Well, I think it's a little better, but I still think that they're coming out the back, still trying to go in, get out, back up, and then try to give them out.
He's working with Nutterford Police.
Yeah, because they're going to come over onto the property now.
Yeah, they're trying to set up a way to... I think we may have to do a small contract with them, which I'm okay with if it'll correct them.
But I know it is, it is a little better, a little better.
And how with our weapons technology?
They're still, they're taking those, they've been to several schools, and they're still making adjustments on them. So I think they're, I mean, they're working.
They've been pretty well used to two schools exclusively that I'm aware of and really no issues. Obviously, there's an adjustment period. The sensitivity has been worked on and adjusted.
It's different in each building.
And I guess the only thing, the only statement I'll make is I know there's, there's been some grumblings from some principals, maybe they don't want to use them or whatever, but I think that if there's any administrator out there that has an issue with this, they need to come and tell us as a board, because I don't think anyone on this board is going to sacrifice safety because it's inconvenient for an administrator. We'll do whatever we have to do to make it more convenient. Safety is number one over inconvenience. That's all. So they can come and speak to us if it's that bad. You know, that's my take, but I don't think anyone on this board would want to lack safety measures.
He's...
Shame on us if we do.
Oh, yeah. We're all, he's also holding monthly safety meetings, which we had prior to, and Mr. Lopez is on that, on those meetings too. And he's meeting regularly with the pro officers. And we're just really, he's got safety at the forefront. And I appreciate it, and he gives me regular updates on what's going on.
And I think the pro officers really like working with us.
And I have some good news. We just got an invite to, have you been seeing on the news, the Communities and Schools programs with the governor's wife, Kathy Justice? And it's really geared around mental health and support for kids. It's a whole program. I don't know a lot about it yet, but we just were invited, Harrison County was invited to join that, Communities and Schools. So I have an invitation to go down October the 4th as a county to represent our county, and they'll give me information and bring us kind of into that fold. So we see that working in conjunction with game changers, and we have Project Aware in some buildings. So I just think the more the opportunity that we can offer kids, the better we'll be. So I gladly accepted that opportunity, and I'll bring you more information as I know. That's all I have for superintendent's update. Thank you.
Okay. I think that moves us down to approval. Consent items?
Make a motion to approve consent items as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I kind of like tried to go through this, and I understand that when it has a description, it not, it really just doesn't, it's not real explicit as to what it is. So I was just wondering why we're paying like Upsher County Schools, I know you said this to me or explained it to me, but like why we're paying Upsher County Schools and why we're paying Mon County Schools and Randolph County Schools, I don't...
And I explained, I hope I was right, that those are the duties that RISA used to handle, that we all took a big, a different piece, and they're paying us for some things, we're paying them for some things.
Shared services.
Okay.
The Upsher County one...
It's shared services that RISA used to handle.
We took fees, everyone took fees.
Payroll.
So like, yeah, we made pay another county for going into billing for Medicaid waiver.
We did project eyes.
They do ours, they do them for all, but they should have just left RISA together, and it wouldn't have been an issue. But they, when they, when they exploded it, those things had to be done, and there's no reason for every county to do it. So, you know, the larger counties, we took more of it, smaller counties took what they could, but then they pay us for things.
Right.
We're probably getting more in from other counties than we're paying out, certainly, because we're going most of the work.
And then I was just, what's Zones LLC? It says installation, but I wasn't real sure. Installation of what?
Do you know what Zones LLC is?
I don't know that Jimmy works with them or...
That's what I, that doesn't just...
Oh, is that Zonar?
Huh?
Zone...
Oh, it could be Zonar, which is our GPS system on our school buses.
Yeah, it is.
It's a, it's an annual fee for licensees of each rail to monitor exactly in real time where our school bus is going.
Okay, but it says installation. That's what I was, that wouldn't be installation.
Wouldn't have a brand new school bus that we are just purchasing each, and I'm not looking at it, so I'm not sure. But each, all those have to be installed. I'm not looking at what page is it on.
I don't know, it just says page one.
Community and school.
I think it was the last page.
Yeah. If you scale up, it's the last.
Uh, I've got... No, no, I was asking about...
I'm trying to...
We have to go over the bus.
Uh, I didn't pause that. I don't know.
How?
Well, that could be, that could be installation and, and the fee for all of it. Well, for having the fee for all of us.
Would be subscription or something like that.
Subtraction isn't that much. It's, we pay a year annual fee, but it's not that much.
It must be for the whole school bus.
Tom, is that a technology thing?
How much is it?
LLC?
331.
That is, oh, that's our Promethean boards.
Promethean board.
Ah ha!
Yeah.
The installation of Promethean board or...
That was just the purchase of, there was no installation, we did the installation.
So it wasn't Promethean boards?
So that's the total?
Yeah.
It wasn't.
That seems about right.
We use schools for schools.
We used to use chocolate.
We use schools for schools carryover.
Chocolate, yeah.
You can buy a lot of chocolate.
Yeah. Get a couple of races.
Right.
And is that the final payment for city construction? Or is that the total payment?
Probably be one more, one final payout.
It's a smaller...
There should be one, but it won't be that much.
Yeah, it was a smaller amount.
Yeah, it almost, we targeted almost 100% of our expenses.
Okay.
Yeah. I think I just signed that.
You did.
The last payout, this last one.
Yeah, and there was one chain worth.
Yeah.
So we're good?
Should be now.
The, we're down to the nitty gritty.
Okay.
And we have one year warranty.
I was going to say, but we, that, we don't have it in future, have to incur future budgets to finish paying.
No, no. No, even the elevator that we need to play was already in budget.
Okay. So we're, I mean, we're going to do that in the summer or...
We're going to try to do it in the summer time.
For Upsher County.
Yeah, mobility specialist.
So that's what I'm happy with. We finished Victory, and we don't have, sometimes when you do that, you have future, but, you know, another budget session to encumber money to finish paying it, but we're paying up.
Okay.
That last payment comes out of the current money and not, you know, sometimes we have to set aside money for three years to pay that, but we don't in this case. All right. Any other questions?
Not for me.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business, is it Minnick?
Minnick.
Minnick. Minnick Family Dentistry Memorandum of Understanding. I always get that wrong. And that's a MOU for dentistry work, and I think that's worked out well too.
We've used them for several years.
So is there a motion?
It's a move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Mountaineer Middle School Parent Coordinator. This is federal funds.
Yeah, title.
Eight dollars per hour.
Yes.
That's pretty cheap.
They took that parent, right? It's required that they have a parent.
They advertise it to all their parents and, you know, took interest in it and wanted the parents.
Not to exceed 116 hours a week. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Or a year. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Out of state travel study request?
I move to accept the out of state travel study requests.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D Memorandum of Understanding between United Summit Center and National Youth Advocate Program.
Project Aware Therapy.
Okay. Is that, that will be, that will be helping out, will that be helping out throughout the county or just these specific schools?
Specific schools.
Okay. Is there the opportunity for growth?
Oh, and if we come up with that, not with this grant. Yeah, project aware.
Project.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But we have, we have monies in SRF to cover some of this mental health, correct?
We could.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to see us expand some of that mental health coverage if possible.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with United Summit Center and the National Youth Advocate Program in Harrison County Schools funded through Project Aware Grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. My only thing is, I know the United Summit Center changed their name. Are they still, are they still, is that a DBA? I'm assuming they're still using United Summit Center.
No, yeah, but it's got a, it's got a name that, it escapes me now, but you wouldn't think it was a mental health center from the name. I can't remember what it was.
The contract still says it.
Okay, that's probably the DBA that they're operating, but everything's officially United Summit Center. So, okay, with that, any other discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. After hours contract for Lori Bailey School Psychologist.
Mr. President, may I, may I make a suggestion that we take all these in tandem together?
Okay. E, F, G, and H?
And I.
I make a motion that we, that we approve items E through K on the agenda.
It's been moved.
After hours contracts for...
Actually, if we can, let's take E through K with the exception of F, because there will need to be a recusal.
Oh, okay.
So E through, let's do E through K right now. We've got a motion on that, is there a second?
I can second.
You can second.
Oh, second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All of them?
Can I ask what, what actually this is? You would think I would know, but I don't.
It is an after hours contract for a school psychologist. If we ever need them, we can't, the caseload's too full, we can't get something done, or a parent won't allow a child to be tested during the school day, and we do it after school, after their hours.
And how often, how often do we use this?
The year I did, especially when we did three the whole year.
There's not to exceed in the contract as well, not to exceed so many hours.
Evaluation. But it sort of helps parents out, and sometimes you just fit kids in that you wouldn't have been a test.
All right, so there's a motion and a second for E, G, H, I, J, and K. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll go back and pick up item F and note your recusal.
Yes.
I'm moved to accept item F. After hours contract for Victoria Bonrowski, school psychologist.
Awesome.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? And this is with the notable recusal of Ms. Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No old business policy updates, personnel matters. Is there a motion on personnel? Oh, actually, we have personnel agenda adjustment addendum to go with that. Employment, Paul Lakin Webb, social and emotional learning specialist, full time, 200 day employment term. That's pulling from Northview Elementary effective September 21st. Pull that from the agenda. And retirement of Gregory H. Moore, principal, full time, 250 day employment term, South Harrison High School, effective October 3rd, 2022.
I lost those.
Is there a motion on the personnel and the agenda adjustment? You want to move to get it up to...
Yeah.
Onto the floor? So motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel agenda with the employment of pulling, pulling Lakin E. Webb, social and emotional learning specialist, and retirement of Greg Moore, principal, South Harrison High School.
Second. Discussion.
What does that mean, you're pulling Lakin Webb? What is...
She called wanting off the job, she did not want to accept the job.
Okay.
She was a new appointment.
Okay.
It was on, it was on the, it was on the media when they started to hire her in the campaign.
Okay, so you just pulled it off.
We can repost.
That way we're not hiring her, she chose not to accept.
I've never seen that before.
She called.
So there's a motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Was yours opposed or...
No, mine was aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Board member comments? Mr. Tucker?
Just appreciate the folks that continue to comment. I feel all up here, but, yeah, just kind of live stream. Please do that each, each meeting. We appreciate it.
Ms. Smith?
No comment. I'm good today.
Sure. Vanna? I had something to say, but I can't remember what it is.
My only thing, it's good, especially new board members, when you start out, you're in the middle of summer, and you say, is this all, it's nice to finally have kids back in where you recognize them. That's where the best, really the best part of the meetings occur, when we have groups, students, things like we had tonight. So those increase as schools and such. You don't have them when you first start out in July, you know, it's kind of a barren wasteland, and you just go about kind of vanilla items. So it's good to see students back, not only in school, but back into our meetings. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Moved to second. And all those in favor say aye.
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 Should I say... Show her a piece.
No face.
Arthur.